Well, good morning. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors' Agendized Meeting. I'd like to begin with roll call.
Supervisor Brandal.
Not missing.
Supervisor Mendez.
I'm here, I think.
Supervisor Pacheco.
Here.
Supervisor Quintero.
Here.
Chairman Magsick.
And I'm here.
All present, thank you.
Excellent. Next, we're going to move to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. And with that, I have Siaki Samuelu, who is here with us. He's the area representative of Fellowship of Christian Athletes in Fresno County. He oversees sixteen school campuses from high school to college. Siaki is married to Martha, and they have one child. Fellowship of Christian Athletes, a vision is to see the world transformed by Jesus Christ through the influence of coaches and athletes. Their mission is to lead every coach and athlete into a growing relationship with Christ and His church. Their values will demonstrate steadfast commitment to Jesus Christ and His Word through integrity, serving, teamwork, and excellence. So please rise with me.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads. Father God, we thank you for allowing us space and time here today to gather in Lord Jesus. Lord, I thank you for these leaders that you have called, Father God, to make decisions on behalf of the people that they serve, Father God. Lord, in your word, it says that may we work diligently and wholeheartedly for you, Father God, and not for man. So may as these leaders make their decisions, may they understand, Father God, the submission to you first, Father. As they serve this great county, Father God, and as they serve each other in this time, Father. Lord, we thank you for our great nation and pray for the struggles that we are having within our own city, our state, and in our nation as a whole. Lord, Father God, may your name be renowned in this nation that we get to call home. Lord, we praise your name, and we give you all the glory and honor. May this time again be useful to bring you glory, Lord Jesus, as we make decisions here today, in the precious and in the holy and the matchless name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, approve agenda.
Sir, a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And that's unanimous.
We now move to item number two, approve consent agenda items fourteen through thirty-eight.
Any members wishing to pull or comment on the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing none. Anyone in the public wishing to pull or comment on a consent agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And that is unanimous as well.
We now move to item number three, under Supervise, approve and authorize chairman to execute standalone tax sharing agreement with City of Fresno for Bullard, Maroa, number three reorganization proposals located on south side of Bullard Avenue between North Maroa and North Winchester Avenues.
Supervisor, you want to make a few comments on this?
All right, thank you. I'm going to ask Public Works and Planning to maybe come to the podium, because they're going to actually give us a presentation. This morning, I'm asking my colleagues to entertain allowing an annexation to move forward. It's a very small, family-owned parcel near Bullard and Maroa. The couple who own this parcel are Lou and Joanne Telesmanic. And last year, I met with them and their consultant Jeff O'Neill from Provost and Pritchett. At that time, they needed some work done on their application from the City of Fresno. So that work has now been done. And I would like us to consider moving this annexation forward under the rules of the former tax sharing agreement. Nothing's changed. They have to take some of the street work adjacent to this property. And so it's effectively a one-off, which we've done before. And I know that there's conversations happening with the city on the big picture about a new tax sharing agreement or where to go with that. But I hope this is a mom-and-pop situation. It's a small piece of property, and they want to put a couple of duplexes on it. It's not very big at all. But I'm hoping that we can move it forward today and maybe inspire some more work done on the big picture. And so I've asked Public Works and Planning to actually give us the details.
Good morning, members of the board. Bernardi Mendez, Department of Public Works and Planning. This is truly an infill project. It's a less-than-acre development bounded on two sides by the existing city limits. So it's a small project, four lots, I believe is the maximum. And so staff recommends approval. As Supervisor mentioned, the fiscal arrangements for property and sales tax sharing remain the same as they were under the 2003 MOU. This concludes staff's presentation.
Very good. Any other comments from board members before I open it up to the public? And I have one for Paul. So I know that a couple of years ago, we did a one-off annexation, the Fanuki annexation. So there were some requirements that our board had put into place. Have those requirements been met? Because I know, at least for me, I'm a little hesitant to do more one-off agreements unless what the city has promised in that Fanuki annexation has been completed.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Paul Nerland, your CAO. The answer to your question is yes. Been working closely with the city manager and their staff, and they have completed the city's requirements in the Fanuki standalone annexation.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none from us. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, I will close the public portion, bring it back for a motion.
Actually, I want to make a comment before the motion, Mr. Chairman. I've been opposed to these in the past quite adamantly. Believe we should have a master plan. I'm okay with this today because, as Supervisor Brandal stated, this is not a developer. This is a couple. It is an infill project. Roads are included. And as alluded to, Supervisor Mendez and I have been meeting with members of the city council. Progress is being made. Hopefully, this will be one of the last one-offs before we come back to this body with a long-term MOU on our tax share agreement. So for those reasons, I will not be in opposition today and support this. And as the CAO stated, the city with our last one-off has complied with all of our requirements. Had they not done that, then it'd be a different story today. Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Then I'll make a motion to approve this annexation as presented.
There a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And that passes unanimously.
We now move to item number four, under Social Services, conduct first hearing to amend the Fresno County ordinance title to Chapter 2.80, Section 2.80.150 to allow the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee members to receive compensation for attending monthly meetings.
Staff, the floor is yours.
All right, good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Sonya Brigade, Department of Social Services.
And Sonya, talk a little bit closer to the microphone.
All right, thank you. This is a request for your board to approve, to amend the ordinance for our IHSS Advisory Committee to receive stipends for attending the committee. We have, this committee has been in place since 2000. It has some legislative requirements of who the membership could be. We have struggled, especially during the COVID years, on post, having sufficient members on the committee. Nearly half of this committee has to be former or current IHSS recipients, then two IHSS providers and two community members at large. We're hoping that utilizing some of our IHSS Advisory Committee allocation, which we have not been spending, not even 50%, to offer stipends would help people for their costs to actually attend meetings. The request is for that stipend to be $50, and then we'll work with county council to do appropriate ordinances and bring it back to your board.
Questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Yes, please, please come forward.
Thank you so much. My name is Diana Kandarian, and I've been on the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee since 2000. And I'd like to say that it's been very difficult, especially after COVID, a little before and after COVID. We haven't had the membership that we really would like to see. Not that there aren't enough consumers in our community, because there's a lot of them, but that there doesn't seem to be enough incentive, you know, for people to get out and to be a part of the community again and to share their thoughts on IHSS with our committee. So we're hoping that a stipend would help that.
Diana, do you believe, do you feel like $50 is adequate, an incentive enough to try to get some of those other positions filled? I think that the committee, when it's full, is nine, nine-number committee?
I think so, yes. Anything will help. We can try anyway.
Excellent. Well, I appreciate you coming and your participation in the committee and also sharing your support for this item, so thank you for that. Any other comments for Diana?
Yeah, I wouldn't. Diane, thank you for coming and expressing your thoughts today. Why do you think, I'm assuming that you're one that can make the meeting and works hard to be there when you can. Why do you think specifically, in detail, why, because we have a lot of committees that serve, why does this committee struggle so much when you hear from your colleagues?
Well, we have a lot of barriers in our lives, transportation, health, sometimes. It's hard to get motivated when you've got a lot of disabilities affecting that day. And I think that financially, people struggle, especially now in this economy. So I think it would help as an incentive to bring people out, you know, and to start participating again.
So I, my thoughts are, and thank you, Diane, Mr. Chairman and my colleagues, my thoughts are, in general, I don't, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of committees and a lot of people that serve. But I think with Diane's testimony, and so in general, I'm not super supportive of the whole stipend mission. But with Diane's testimony, I think, I think it does make more sense on this particular committee.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for a motion.
I really, really hope this passes. I know it's unusual, but there's just a lot of barriers in the lives of people with different disabilities and especially, it's hard to get out in the community. It costs money, it takes time.
I think, I think that you'll be pleased and you'll get to witness here in just literally ten seconds what this body is going to do. So is there a motion for approval of staff's recommendation on this for the $50 stipend?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
We now move to item number five, under Fresno County Employees Retirement Association, receiving file the Fresno County Employees Retirement Association Actuarial Evaluation and Review Report and review as of June 30, 2023, by the SEAGUL Group relating to the Fresno County Employees Retirement Association.
We only get to hear from our retirement folks about once a year, and so Don Kandig is here, who is the director of F-CERA. So the floor is yours, and Don, of course, is going to be brief, and I'm sure some of you may have some questions.
I won't bore you with a ton of numbers. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board and staff. I'm Don Kandig, your retirement administrator, and before you is an item to approve the contribution rates for next year. There are one and a half pages of fiscal and financial impacts, but what you need to know is that the rates are going up by 3.3% or $17.6 million this year. But that's just part of the story. I do have some good news associated with this. And I'm going to go ahead and display this page here, if I can have this device turned on. Perfect. So to put it in context, while the rates are going up by 3.3%, they were at a high of 61% not too long ago in 2019. They went down to 46% in 2022, just last year. That was a 15% decrease over those years. So it happens to be going up by 3.3, but I have some good news to show you on the right there. We are anticipating a decrease of 4% in the future fiscal year, negative eight and a negative point seven, but then there'll be some minor increases going forward. Now, while these are the numbers, I wanted to show you the chart that always warms my heart, and it's this one here. And these are in your materials, but these I want to emphasize because I'm more of a picture person, but this shows those decreases that we forecast. So I do want to let you know in about three to four fiscal years, you'll see a minor increase, a big decrease, and in three years of smaller increases. It is on a downward trend, so when you have an occasional increase, please don't shoot the messenger, but I think we're in a good spot going forward. I do want to let you know Paul, staff, and I reviewed this actuary report page by page, and it's greatly improved our forecasting ability. And I just wanted to bring you the positive forecast and open it up for questions.
All right, any questions from my colleagues? Couple of things I want to point out, too. All of this is tied to performance of the stock market. Some things that the F-CERA board has done in the last, really, three or four years is they've reduced our assumed rate of return from 7% to 6.5% to be a little bit more conservative. And while in the short term, that created an unfunded liability, because when you assume future returns are going to be lower, you have to recognize that loss in a given year. And so it affects our net position on paper. But moving forward, because of the prudence of F-CERA staff and the board that's there, I think we're on a much more stable footing, even if there is some volatility in the markets. But barring anything catastrophic happening, a complete crash or depression, I think that we're, we should see decreases, which should help our, our financial position as we move forward, even if the state continues to have challenges.
And Chairman Magsick, that's a very good point, because we've done about all the belt tightening that we can do. We are one of the best-funded plans, I'd say, in the nation as far as our metrics for the funding policy. And I wanted to thank your board for being supportive of that. I still have my head and I still have all my flesh, and without your support, it would have been much more painful to get there. So I want to thank you for that.
All right. This, seeing no, yes, please.
He said, "We don't hear from you very often." We hear from him all the time, and he's on your board. So, you know, you guys have done some really good work and continue to do your good work.
Thank you. I hear from him all the time, too.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Anyone, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and entertain a motion to, to receive this report and also accept the valuations in it.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, board.
We now move to item number six, under Public Works and Planning, adopt the proposed resolution certifying that the program environmental impact report prepared for Fresno County General Plan Review and Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Update to completely adequate and in conformance with the California Environmental Quality Act.
Staff, the floor is yours. I'm holding my breath. I'm going to, what do we have?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bernardi Mendez, Department of Public Works and Planning. Today, staff is pleased to present the county's general plan review, zoning ordinance update, and associated program environmental impact report. This effort represents the culmination of years of work and countless hours of community engagement by department staff. The revised general plan and zoning ordinance reflects the input of numerous state and local agencies, community-based organization, community stakeholders, business owners, and individual residents. Before staff makes its formal presentation, I would just like to point out that the revised general plan builds upon and refines the goals and policies of the 2000 general plan and retains the county's focus of protecting farmland and natural resources, as well as directing new population and urban growth to the fifteen cities and the county's unincorporated communities. The revised general plan places renewed focus on the county's unincorporated communities and areas impacted by environmental hazards in the form of new environmental justice policies and programs, as well as new industrial development standards intended to protect communities and create opportunities for every resident in Fresno County to live in healthy and safe communities regardless of their race, color, national origin, or income. To this end, the revised general plan also reflects the collaboration, engagement, and coordinated efforts between the county staff and the department, State Department of Justice's Attorney General's Office. I'd like to personally thank Deputy Attorney General Robert Swanson for making available the state's resources and assistance in helping department staff develop its new environmental justice policies and programs and individual development standards. Here today to present the general plan review and zoning ordinance project is Chris Mata, Project Manager and Development Services and Capital Projects Manager, Will Kettler, Deputy Director of Planning, and the County Consultants Team, Rincon Consultants. And with that, I'd like to pass it off to Chris to make, start the presentation.
Good morning. The general plan review zoning ordinance update involves a number of key documents: the draft and final program environmental impact report, the revised general plan policy document, background report and updated zoning ordinance, which includes additional revisions made since April 2023 release of the public review drafts, responses to comments on the general plan policy document and environmental impact report, and the SEQA findings document with statement of overriding considerations and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Since starting the EIR process for this project, staff has conducted a number of outreach events, including thirty meetings or workshops held throughout the county. Specifically following the April 2023 release of the revised project documents and draft program EIR, staff held seven community meetings, community workshops in May and June of last year, including meetings in unincorporated communities of Cantua Creek, Malaga, Biola, and Riverdale. And staff conducted a public workshop with the planning commission in September of last year. The general plan review zoning ordinance update makes a number of necessary improvements to the general plan policy document while retaining core themes of the 2000 general plan. It extends the planning period from 2000 to 2042, retains major themes of the 2000 general plan, including directing urban growth to cities and unincorporated communities, limiting impacts to productive agricultural lands, and limiting rural residential development. It also addresses several legislative changes approved by the state since the adoption of 2000 general plan through policy or zoning ordinance modifications. And some of these required changes include emergency evacuation routes, climate adaptation, density bonus for residential development, and streamlined processes for housing development. The new general plan policy document also includes an environmental justice element, which addresses the requirements of state law regarding disadvantaged and environmental justice communities through new policies and implementation programs. And it contains an updated safety element that addresses climate hazards, including wildfires, fire vulnerability, emergency evacuation, which this document was submitted to and approved by the State Board of Forestry in May of last year. Finally, the revised general plan also includes board-directed redesignation of lands along the area near Reno and Aubrey Roads to reflect existing partialization and land uses in the area. Some notable changes to the zoning ordinance include new standards for industrial development to minimize impacts to sensitive receptors and disadvantaged communities, additional flexibility for directors' determinations and temporary use permits, incorporation of state-mandated requirements and practices for accessory dwelling units, multifamily objective design standards, and expansion of potential locations for emergency shelters. Modifications also address prior ambiguities in the document and reformatting the ordinance with user-friendly tables, diagrams, and graphics. The general plan policy document includes reference to two special study areas, one, Business Industrial Campus southeast of Fresno, and two, a proposed education-based master plan community north of State Route 180 near the Kings River. The revised general plan carries forward the themes identified in the 2000 general plan document with the addition of the environmental justice theme. Some of the other thirteen themes is noted on this slide include economic development, agricultural land protection, urban-centered growth, resource protection, and affordable housing. This table illustrates the county's eight general plan elements and how they address or incorporate mandatory elements as required by state law. The county elements, which in several instances incorporate more than one that the state's required elements, are listed on the left side of the table, and state-mandated elements are shown at the top of the table. The county's economic development and public facilities and services elements are examples of optional elements not mandated by the state of California. Revised general plan policy documents, new environmental justice element, addresses topics related to land use in the environment, promotion of physical activity and facility access, access to healthy foods, safe and sanitary homes, and community participation. Regarding the revised general plan safety element, several modifications to the element were drafted following a July 2021 release of the public review draft of the general plan policy document. Additional changes were made based on recommendations from the county's consultant, data from the climate vulnerability assessment prepared for the project, and comments received from Cal Fire staff. As required by state law on May 9 of last year, county staff, the county consultant, and Cal Fire staff presented the revised safety element to the California Board of Forestry, which was accepted without additional changes. And now I'll turn the presentation over to Will Kettler, Deputy Director of Planning.
Good morning. Slide before you is the area known as the Reno-Garon Willow Bluff area. This area received a direction from the board in November of 2017 to be, to address the issues related to the numerous variances that were occurring in the area, as well as the concerns over water supply. In this document, the area will be redesignated to rural residential, minimum five-acre lot standards to address any water concerns and size concerns, as well as be zoned AL-20, which is a holding zone. Those wanting to subdivide properties would be then dealing with site-specific rezones and site-specific SEQA in those cases. And/or, of course, variances are still an option, but they would also deal with SEQA in that case. So this area is, this is a carryforward of board direction received in 2017. Next slide, please. Apparently, Mr. Mata broke the PowerPoint presentation. I apologize. It's not working? There we go. Next three slides are simply illustrious as to what's been going on with the document and some of the key pages that we have. This is a format page that shows the reader essentially how the page is laid out and what each of the items means with regard to the policies and programs, et cetera. Next slide, please. This is a page that cites the general plan programs and the like. It's just a reader's guide, essentially. And then the next slide is showing an example of a redline page and also noting that the general plan document is online at FresnoCountyGeneralPlan.com with the public review period of April from, of 23 to January of '24. So this is one of the documents we have up. Let's talk a little bit about the zoning ordinance update. Zoning ordinance is a new format. It utilizes a great many tables, which are used for comparative value to compare not only land uses allowed and various land use permitting requirements for each use in each district. You have several districts compared on each page, as well as development standards for districts. Individual land use districts are dealt with in their standards in Article II. Article VII is our definition section, which has been expanded to include modern normanclature, and we have special standards in Article IV. The key issues that we're adding now are objective review standards, design standards for multifamily. This is to minimize and streamline the process for multifamily residential housing. Commercial warehousing standards were, standards were added to address potential impacts to sensitive receptors. We actually worked on those in coordination with the, for example, the State Attorney's General Office. Temporary uses is something new to our zoning ordinance. This gives the director the ability, through a review process, to issue temporary uses related to things like flea markets and the like, which is, we do not have presently. And that allows for folks to do short-term events without going through a extremely elongated process and also allows them for limited use sometime. The director's determination allows the director to make certain determinations and interpretations based on the, based on the ordinance provisions and what's happening in the field and ADU, accessory dwelling units, which are required by state law. The various articles are broken down, as illustrated on the screen, just to add a little bit of, a little bit of detail. The purpose and applicability deals with items such as interpretations and land use permitting requirements, basic land use process requirements. Article II is our zones, our zone districts, and our zone-specific standards. So that would be our typical, what we have in our typical ordinance today. Article III replaces our current Section 855, which has standard Article III replaces our current Section 855, which has standards that are related to specific uses. And you'd have the breakdown there. And there, in that same article, you have affordable housing requirements and housing incentives and density bonuses, which are required by Government Code Number 65915. And we also have landscape, parking, loading, et cetera. In Article IV, you have specific land use standards related to issues accessory housing dwellings and industrial standards as well. And these are, as I mentioned, were worked on with coordination with the Attorney's General's Office. That includes standards for sensitive receptors, as I noted. Article IV, Article V, pardon me, is simply procedures for filing a land use permit and the like. And Article VI relates to administration, meaning appeals, enforcement, how to conduct public hearing procedures, the like. And then our definitions, as I mentioned, were expanded. Next slide, please. So with a project of this size, with, with only one area that's specifically called out for any type of actually specific action related to Garone and Reno, we did a programmatic level EIR. This was circulated for sixty days, which exceeds the state minimum of forty-five days, sixty days from April of '23 to June of '23. The final EIR was posted in January, on January 5th, and was circulated out to interested parties on January 12th. Program EIRs, the intent of an EIR in general and SEQA is to inform the public and the decision-makers of environmental effects and identify ways to possibly minimize impacts and include alternatives. And the, the, the purpose of the document is not to recommend approval, it's just simply to disclose those for decision-makers and the public's review and action. In this case, the program EIR identified several less-than-significant impacts related to the items on the list, anything from aesthetics down to hazardous materials, hydrology, and biological resource. Biological resources does include some mitigation. We have. The EIR does have significant and unavoidable impacts as well, and these are listed here. And those are going to be addressed later. So if anything, from air quality, ag, to wildfire. The program EIR does include programmatic, it does include mitigation built into various policies as listed. These are policies that include what we call self-mitigating standards, and those are listed in the items there. And those are the inclusive of those that are in the document itself. Our Section 15091, "Public agency prior to approving may identify significant impacts." Next slide, please. Thank you. And "make one or more written findings." Exhibits two and three of the Planning Commission's staff report includes those findings and the MMRP. It's in your packet.
Mr. Kettler, I hate to interrupt you, but
Yes, sir.
Can you help me clarify? You clearly gave the definition of an EIR.
Yes, sir.
What is the differences between an EIR and a program EIR? Can you help explain that for me, please?
Programmatic EIRs is dealt when you're at a, I'm going to use the same term to define it, which is a big no-no, is programmatic level, which means it's a higher-level document. It's not project-specific.
So it's more, more detailed?
It's actually, it's, it's more detailed on a larger level, but it's not, it's not reviewing a specific project, per se. So when we have a pro, a project-level EIR, every impact associated with that project is being analyzed. Programmatic is a higher level, and it's, it's basically a pre-step to specific projects.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Not a problem, sir. Thank you. So Planning Commission considered this item on January 25th of 2024. Public testimony was received. There were seven individuals that presented public testimony, at which time, some of those issues largely related to, several speakers noted the concerns about general plan policy, proposed general plan policy, LUE-25, which dealt with the study area for the State Route 180 Trimmer Springs area near the Kings River. It was clarified at the hearing that that is a study area only, not a project. It does not represent a project. No application's been filed and the like, simply a study area. So the Planning Commission was aware of that. Other issues were raised regarding climate change, disadvantaged communities, that the, the document should look at benefits for all residents, including those of disadvantaged communities. There was comments about the public engagement process being lacking, as Mr. Mata summarized. There's quite a few meetings on this, both, both public meetings, workshops, et cetera. And after considering the public testimony and the staff reporting, Planning Commission voted unanimously six to one of those present to recommend approval of the documents to your board, with the exception of proposing or recommending the removal of policy number LUE-25 related to this special study area at 180 in Trimmer Springs. That concludes staff presentation.
And Will, a question I have. Staff is still recommending to this body that LUE-25 remain in because it was direction from our board to look into that, I think, a year, maybe eighteen months ago, correct?
That is correct. Your board directed back in 2021 to include that as, as a particular policy, which we've done. So staff would recommend that your board could accept that and continue with that includes being included in the general plan.
All right. Excellent. Any questions for staff before I open it up to the public, or is there any additional information staff needs to provide to us before we start questioning you?
There have been a number of, of late correspondence that were provided to staff late last week and over the weekend. Those have been distributed to your board for consideration.
And, and with that, thank you for pointing that out. I need to ask county council. So with some of this correspondence, I know some of them are legal in nature, legal letters. Is there anything that prevents us from taking testimony and, and moving forward today based upon what you've seen so far?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a
Yes.
A small group of questions. So, starting about two months ago, a lot of members of the media and folks and other folks have been asking me questions about an industrial park. And in all reality, and this, you know, something that we directed a study to be done on, and so I've been telling folks, at this point, it's not really included in the general plan as a project, but it's still just in a study phase. And so is there any remarks in this general plan that contain that as a project, or am I being accurate when I tell them, right now, at this point, it's a study phase?
No, you are completely accurate, Supervisor. There is a policy in there that commits the county to looking at this in the future. There is no project as defined by SEQA under consideration, either in our EIR or in our, in our policy document. So that will come at some subsequent point in time.
Okay. And I think this comes because our partners at the EDC and the study that we approved, I think it was a million dollars, some of that work has already been done. So EDC's gone out and asked landowners questions, and so that, the, the word's kind of getting out there. So if we were to proceed with an industrial park concept from this moment forward, it's not in the current general plan, what would be the steps necessary?
So to lead, anything that leads to ultimate development, one would require amending our general plan, because the majority of the area that's under consideration is designated for agriculture. So it would require a general plan amendment, rezone, and, and obviously compliance with, with an additional SEQA review, because that is not contemplated under this process that we have before you today. Very likely, that will be another EIR that we would undertake for, for that level of land use planning. That, that has not been initiated yet.
Okay. So anything that would be done is, is not put in play by passing the general plan today? We'd have to come back to this body. We'd have to look at the stuff that came back from the, the studies that have been done and, and make a decision whether to move forward or not?
Correct. We, we have not analyzed, if this project moves forward in the future, we would analyze the impacts associated with that specific development project. And, and it would go to a planning commission and then back to, back to your board for final action.
Okay. And the chairman acknowledged, you know, or I can't remember who said, we've got a lot of kind of last-minute comment, comments on our general plan. And I, I can't go into all of those questions, but I have a couple of questions that I think have overlapped with some of these questions. So I wanted to ask about the ag land conservation section of the general plan. And I know that a lot of folks, you know, they haven't been able to review. This is a big document, and matter of fact, you guys gave it to us on a flash drive. It was so big. So in that section, for developers and ag property owners who are considering development, you know, what, when you take land, ag land out of production, what mitigations can a developer go through working with the landowner on those properties?
So projects subject to that mitigation, frankly, there, there's a wide range of potential mitigation, including a requirement to go out and acquire land that, on a one-to-one ratio, that would offset the conversion of that, that mitigation, of that land. So our, our mitigation measure has been refined as we've gone through this process. There is an exclusion for projects less than twenty acres that are associated with agricultural uses, and there are other exemptions relating to compliance with Sustainable Groundwater Management Act plans, housing, affordable housing as well. And, and some of those exclusions actually come from the state's model ordinance, State Department of Conservation has, has put that out there for jurisdictions to consider. So all in all, if projects are converting lands that are designated prime farmland, unique farmland, and lands of statewide importance, they would be subject to that mitigation requirement.
So in that mitigation, are we giving folks options, or is the one-to-one ratio the only option that they have when it comes?
There are other options. In lieu, fee credit is another potential option. That would be something that we would determine as part of the, the individual project review. So we, we pretty much have put out a menu of mitigations that have been used throughout the state as, as appropriate to, to offset the, the requirement of land conversion.
Okay. So we have a basket of choices that people can choose from
Correct.
When they're going through that process.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I appreciate that. And then, I think this is my final question. I might be inspired by members of the audience, but how about the housing element portion? A lot of questions about the housing element. How does that work into this general plan? Is that work that needs to be done in the future or completely already included in, in today's general plan presentation?
So development of the housing element is actually something that's running parallel to this project. It is not part of this project in, in that it's not contained. So the, the county has submitted its draft housing element to HCD, I think it was December of last year, and we're going through that review and consultation process. From an environmental standpoint, however, the population that, that would be associated with the county's assignment under its regional housing needs is addressed because this is looking out twenty years. And so, so we've included that. But as your board may recall, we had some individual rezonies that came before your board last year that met a portion of the county's obligation. There will need to be additional rezones in the future, once we identify those sites in order to meet our, our obligation. But the housing element is not part of this project for your consideration. That's running a parallel, a parallel course.
All right. Because the city of Fresno asked that question in their submission, some questions relating to that, and even a couple, couple of others did. So the housing element still needs more work. There's still more work to be done. It's not entirely complaint, contained in today's general plan passage, so.
That, that is correct. And while we are looking at the housing element to be, being brought back to your board sometime later this year, keep in mind, this is a twenty-year document, so there will be multiple housing elements that will be having to, not just this one, but these are good for eight years, and then after that, we're back doing another one. So, so it's almost impossible to identify all potential sites that would be needed on either this one or future housing elements because of the planning period for this project.
All right. Thanks, Bernard. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So you have anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Got some questions. Thank you. Mr. Menendez, he, he made a comments, and it was good presentation. I appreciate that. And I'll get to your comments in a minute. But the, the study is, is how the general plan has been presented. Was it also part of that study included to regards, in regards to infrastructure and air quality and, and water as well? Or would that come as each project comes forward?
So this kind of gets back to that discussion about programmatic approach, because this document contains a host of policies that deals with various development opportunities as well as resource conservation throughout the county. So we kind of did a high-level analysis of that. Individual projects that, that come in, that, that seek to implement a portion of the plan, you know, the first thing we'll look at is, did we adequately address it with this environmental document? And, and if the answer is no, then we have to do subsequent environmental review to look at things like infrastructure needs and, and any impacts associated with a specific project. So the, based on the information we know, and, and one thing we cannot do is speculate under, about future development that may occur, that we, we don't have information about. And so that's why we do kind of a programmatic, that's where the term comes from, approach to look at it kind of of a high-level analysis of what these, what development in the future may look like. But chances are, we're going to have to do subsequent SEQA analysis because we just haven't looked at everything that could be proposed with, under this general plan. And one thing I think it's important to point out is that the fundamental policy direction of our general plan is to preserve agriculture and direct that growth to the cities and to our unincorporated communities. Fundamentally, that has not changed. Even with adding these additional potential study areas, fundamentally, that, our directive has not changed on that. Now, we do have economic development objectives that go hand in hand. So any one particular project has to be consistent with the totality of the general plan, not just our land use element or environmental justice element, but all the elements in our general plan. So that's important. Sometimes you'll hear comments about what the county is contemplating doing, and that may be the case, but at the end of the day, your board has to determine that proposal is consistent with the general plan and all the mandatory elements.
And I agree with, with my colleagues, the, the importance of the preservation of, of ag land. That's critical for our county. But the, the comments and emails that I receive, phone calls, that type of thing, you know, from different individuals and groups, is, is of course, the air quality, the environmental aspect of our county, and infrastructure as well. Having the proper infrastructure and water is critical, of course. So those, those comments will also be addressed as each project comes forward, or do we make some comment of that in, in this report?
No, we, we've addressed those, those topics based on our projections of population to the year 2042, and, and
Twenty forty-two?
Yeah, twenty forty-two.
Twenty-two.
And so, so we have, we have, you know, we've done a lot of analysis to look at what are those impacts. And, and as staff had indicated in the presentation, there are environmental impacts that we simply cannot mitigate. And, and that is well within your board's authority to determine that those impacts can occur because of other circumstances that outweigh those impacts. But as you know, we're, we're in the Central Valley, and we have air quality impacts that will continue to occur, but we have included a multitude of mitigation measures and policies that are seeking to reduce those, including requiring development to meet new standards, air quality standards, in terms of materials, paints, things of that nature, you know, avoiding idling generators, things of that, things that are, that practically can be implemented to, to help lessen those air quality impacts.
And you'll have to make adjustments along the way with the population growth?
Absolutely. And, and that, that changes. The state weighs in on those population growths, and we're seeing trends right now that, that are showing that the population growth may not be as great as, as once contemplated. But we're basing our, our recommendations based on the analysis and the information we have today. And, and one thing to point out is that this will not be a stagnant document that gets approved and sits on a shelf. We annually will come back to your board. We, we do that already to talk about how we're implementing the general plan. We'll be back in your board later, later, I think, next month to talk about the, the last report for, for the old general plan, and then we'll be focusing on implementation. And I know that there's a lot of folks that will be looking over our shoulders and asking us, how are we doing?
Can you do me a favor and repeat that about reviewing it annually and bringing it to the board?
Correct. Yeah. So, so state law does require that each jurisdiction provide a, a report to its planning commission and board on the status of implementing the general plan. And so we, we do that now. We will continue to do that. And beginning next year, we'll, we'll begin to tell you how, how we're doing, the progress we're making on this proposed general plan. And, and we will, we will do that continuously. So that gives both the commission and your board the opportunity to make, direct staff to make adjustments. And we'll come forward with those recommendations as well. But it is an opportunity to revisit this year, this, this topic annually.
I asked you to clarify that for just the information that it will be done annually.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. And so you, and you, you mentioned that the housing study runs parallel with, with the general plan review. Would that also include, well, a housing Would that also include, well, a housing, when we're reviewing that, that we have to include some affordable housing within that, right?
Yeah, so, part of the housing element development process is the allocation of housing units to plan for. And so, we've been assigned a number, and it includes all categories, from market rate down to very affordable housing units. And so, our plan includes that. There are, for the first time, at least in my memory, the county's going to have to proactively rezone sites. We've done a few of those already, and we'll need to do more in order to be in compliance to show the state that we have an inventory of sites available for development. So, we're going through that process right now. But, I will tell you that, you know, while our policies are to direct growth to the cities and to the unincorporated communities, you know, the state has been very aggressive in its housing mandates. And so, what the future holds, we don't know, but we also want to be cognizant that we could be straddled with having to designate and zone more lands in our unincorporated areas that we are not contemplating, but it's just an acknowledgement of what some of the state housing laws are requiring the county to do.
Okay, and we're, I believe we had some affordable housing in Supervisor Mendez's district last year. Was that 14 houses?
Yeah.
Carruthers and Riverdale, so that's all part of that.
Yeah, I, just a little commentary, you know, this, trying to balance the state's mandates and their policy directions with the local desires of conservation, they don't always align. On one hand, we're being asked to provide for more housing, and on the other hand, we're being told, you know, conserve groundwater, conserve air quality, reduce the number of vehicle miles traveled. So, it's our challenge to try to balance those directives that don't always align with each other, and I think we've done a relatively good job of trying to meet those objectives in this document.
And water is always a concern.
Water is always a concern, yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I am now going to open this portion of the meeting to the public, so please step forward and share with us your wisdom. That's your choice.
My name is Dion Bordeis. Now, let's shed light on the cons of amending the general plan as presented today. First, I ask the board, why now? Why after a 20-year hiatus is the Board of Supervisors changing the general plan today? Why doesn't the plan balance preservation and development? Instead, it terminates four environmental protection programs the board itself approved but never actually implemented or took any actual action on in the years following their approval? Why are we abandoning decades-old planning guidelines? Why are we adding to the urban sprawl negatively affecting our community at large? Mr. Brando, in our recent debates, didn't you speak on the issues of transportation infrastructure being an issue in northern Fresno? Why are we creating more of the same issue? Why are we taking this action? I suspect perhaps for the advocating developers, Ben Yul and John Harris, perhaps? I wonder, are they contributors to your campaigns? This one makes sense, as your own planning commission itself recommended just last week in putting the Kings River area outside of the new general plan and not including it. This decision has huge implications, yet the general plan lacks actual substantial analysis of the impact of these changes on massive land use plans, notably for roads, traffic, climate change, and air quality. Why did the board specifically designate both land proposals as study areas? It seems to me it was to avoid requiring the environmental reviews on these projects. How was environmental protection a new theme in the general plan when the environmental studies themselves you've already approved are being ignored? Well, I think it's obvious. This is a tactic to gain easier approval through piecemeal general plan amendments down the line, minimizing public oversight of climate and environmental impacts. This is wrong. Over the coming decades, a recent county study concluded approval will increase greenhouse gas emissions during the lifespan of the general plan. Why aren't we following state law requiring emissions to be cut by 80% by 2050? Why are we going backwards? More pollution and more health consequences does not benefit our community and the majority, only those seeking to profit from it. Why aren't you looking at financing your longstanding emissions reduction programs? Why aren't you fulfilling your legal obligations to report on the implementation of the general plan and its associated mitigating measures? Since 2018, has Fresno County not levied, why has Fresno County not levied developer fees intended to fund major public facilities? It seems to benefit the developers, not us. Why do we keep pushing leapfrog development? Why are we creating the exact urban sprawl responsible for numerous issues plaguing the county? This is unacceptable. Year after year, progress reports have revealed a troubling pattern of inaction. For the last two decades, Fresno County's failed to implement any proposed mitigating--
Sir, you're the first one, and every speaker's going to get three minutes, unless if this is going to go long, then I'll have to pare it back. So, thank you for your comments. Is there another speaker? Please step forward.
Yeah, you're more than welcome to form a line. Good morning, and thank you. I'm Sue Buckley. I'm the president of the Kings River Conservancy, so obviously my comments will be related to the river. Our organization is particularly concerned from Pine Flat Dam on down to the 99, but the river really had some impact last year, didn't it? It killed some individuals. Careful monitoring by Pine Flat Dam mitigated a lot of flooding, but a lot of flooding still occurred. It made its way down and carved out some individuals' homes right at 180 and Piedra Road, where those landowners lost part of their land, made its way down to Reedley College and impacted educational resources where my husband Jerry Buckley is president and the top, one of the top seven ag, it is the top ag school in the state of California. Thank you, Supervisor Mendez. And then, it wandered its way down and created an impact to the city of Reedley's sewage system and created an entire lake out of what had been some pretty productive agricultural land. We have an opportunity to recreate the Kings River Regional Plan, which dates all the way back to 1979, so more than 40 years old. Please initiate a revisiting of the Kings River Regional Plan. It's not just one development that you folks will have to consider, but actually probably many, and each one of those developments taken as individuals might seem less than impact, but if we really work to consider the entire Kings River riparian era, use the voices of expertise that are available to us, and create a substantive, carefully considered plan that factors in what might be unintended consequences to any one or multiple developments. Any questions for me?
Good morning. My name is Esther Ramirez, and I reside in the community of Cantua Creek. It's a small community that deserves to be part of the general plan update. We need to have basic infrastructures such as sidewalks, all-weather pathways for children to walk to school and for general use by residents, a pathway lined by trees to provide shade and shield from the dust, traffic, a park, and a community center. The center can be an information hub for safety training by a fire department in the case of a fire, first aid training, and first aid training. We currently don't have onsite services for fire or medical needs. We also need safe and affordable drinking water. The new water system is due to be ready by 2025, should nothing else delay it. And these recommendations will aid the county in implementing several of the elements in the general plan. We are a small community that should have all the advantages a city or small town has.
Good morning. My name is Maria Dolores Diaz, and I came from Cantua Creek. Señor Pacheco, gracias que ha ido a visitarnos a mesa de supervisores. Gracias por escucharnos. Yo vengo también a apoyo a lo que dijo mi compañera. Sorry that I spoke a little bit English. Y este, quiero que piensen en ese plan general que tienen en mi pequeña comunidad. Tenemos una escuela casi con más de 200 estudiantes, pero también es eso que no tenemos un parque para los niños, un centro de comunidad para nosotros los ancianos. Y me gustaría que pensaran en ese plan general y nos tuvieran en cuenta por su apoyo. El agua también para los rancheros, para que llegue trabajo, porque estamos rodeados de campos agrícolas, y pues de eso vivimos.
You want me to go ahead? I'm Letitia Berber. I'm going to go ahead and interpret for her. She supports her colleagues' comments on Cantua Creek. She would like Cantua Creek to be added to this plan. There's a school, over 200 students there, no park, no community center for senior citizens, and she also would like to see more water for her ag workers out there, and just supporting that the plan be included, or Cantua Creek included in this plan this time.
Hello, good morning. My name is Mariana Alvarenga, policy advocate at Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. If the proposed general plan policies and programs are approved today, they will be valid until at least 2042. That is 18 years from today. This means that your board has a big responsibility to ensure that the policies and programs are strong, enforceable, and centered on climate-driven solutions. This approach is urgent to ensure it habito Fresno County for everyone, especially for historically disinvested communities. As you all know, we work alongside residents in Cantua Creek, Three Rocks, Leneer, Tombstone Territory, and South Central Fresno, and have highlighted our concerns with the proposed general plan in several comment letters. I want to highlight the study area for industrial park and new development along the Kings River. The county needs to focus on addressing needs and existing disadvantage unincorporated communities, not planning for new development. The county's time, energy, and resources need to be focused on the needs of communities like Leneer, Cantua, El Porvenir, Tombstone, who have been bringing up these concerns and priorities for decades. A few of these residents are here today, and you have already heard from two of them. Although we appreciate the county's efforts to update the general plan, we urge the board to take into consideration our policy and program recommendations, specifically under SB 244, SB 1000, SB 379. We ask the board to hire additional staff who can dedicate their time to securing grants that will allow the county to implement the policies and programs in the general plan without continuing to note in future APRs that programs were not implemented due to lack of funding and staff time. If the general plan policies and programs are not implemented, it becomes a useless document. We ask your board to read our comment letters and direct your staff to make the necessary changes before approving today's general plan. Thank you.
Chairman, Board of Supervisors. On behalf of the Sierra Club, the Central Valley Partnership, and the League of Women Voters of Fresno, we submit these comments on the environmental impact report prepared by the county of Fresno and on its general plan review and zoning ordinance update. The EIR does not comply with the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act and may not be certified. Because the county fails to adopt all feasible mitigation measures for air quality and greenhouse gas climate impacts, among other impacts, it may not be approved for the GPRZOU. Before I continue, I'm Daniel O'Connell. I am the Policy and Research Director at the Central Valley Partnership. I'm also the Land Use and Agriculture Chair at the Sierra Club. The letter that we submitted to yesterday afternoon, and that I will submit by hand today, is by our law firm, Carson's Black &amp; Minter. The document also notes that these other impacts that aren't addressed through your SEQA analysis include agricultural land preservation, water quality and supply, wildlife habitat, environmental justice issues, and others that have not been mitigated, as noted in public comments opposing approval of the general plan as currently formulated. It also references a Fresno Land article that came out two days ago that rhetorically supports a lot of these points. I'll be submitting those, but before I conclude my comments, it's probably been 20 years that I've been advocating on general plans. Before most of you were in your positions, I met with everyone as the Farmland Conservation Director, the first one in the region, and then later with American Farmland Trust. As I educate the public on what a general plan is, I always mention to them that these are the economic constitutions of a city or county. The reason I say that is that I want to prepare the public to legally and procedurally contest them when there's violations of law. What I often don't mention is that these plans have ethical and moral dimensions and foundations. The easiest way for the public at large to understand those moral and ethical values is to ask a simple question: In whose benefit is the plan designed? This plan, as I look at it, is designed to benefit a handful of sprawl developers and agribusiness interests at the expense of the public at large, and in particular, the rural unincorporated communities that the Leadership Council and other environmental justice advocate organizations propose to help.
Thank you.
We should reverse this and help the most vulnerable rather than the most wealthy.
Good morning. I'm Kay Burtkin, one of the co-presidents of the League of Women Voters of Fresno. I'm submitting to the board a set of documents representing the local league's long history of concerns with the evolution of the general plan and its poor implementation and review. Those concerns continue to be relevant to the changes contemplated today. These documents are already in the record from years of our comments, but I'm submitting them again together for your convenience. The league continues to have major concerns with the update you're considering today. We've made those concerns clear in a letter we sent to the board clerk yesterday. We've included that letter again with this packet of documents. We are alarmed by the lack of any obvious interest in containing urban sprawl in this update. We do not see evidence of required mitigation that would appropriately address the air pollution and climate effects, ag land loss, and water concerns of development throughout the county. We ask that the board table approval of this update until it's remedied these flaws.
Good morning. Jennifer Clark, Director of Planning and Development for the City of Fresno. Thank you so much for your time this morning. Having sat at that table before, I think first it's important to recognize the enormous lift that your staff has done. They have worked really, really hard for a long time on this particular document. In particular here, I am here today to talk specifically about the legal enforceability of some of the mitigation measures and the policies in the document. The city of Fresno does not believe that the document, in particular the EIR, includes sufficient mitigation measures to address impacts related to agricultural resources, air quality and GHG, water resources, and transportation, including VMT. I agree that a programmatic EIR is a higher-level document. However, to be self-mitigating, the policies must be legally enforceable and not voluntary, and must be specific enough to mitigate impacts to the environment. In particular, the city would like to, the county, to consider adding a number of mitigation measures, one of which is specific to water resources related to the issuance of discretionary entitlements or building permits for nondiscretionary entitlements, new development projects in the county that are within the city's sphere of influence or within one-half mile of the city's boundaries, and to require a report prepared by a certified hydrologist that demonstrates the project is utilizing groundwater in a sustainable manner. Our letter details the specifics of that request. Additionally, the city points to GHG 1 and GHG 2 policies. Additionally, the city points to GHG-1 and GHG-2 policies. HS-G12 and HS-G13 do not constitute legally adequate mitigation as development of the Climate Action Plan is contingent upon the county obtaining funds from grants, state funding, and development impact fees. Additionally, related specifically to agricultural resources, agricultural resources has been identified as a significant and unavoidable impact. However, it fails to comply with the requirements of SEQA Guideline Section 15126A2. And in particular, we believe that the policies and the EIR mitigation measures do not comply with current case law related to agricultural mitigation. Again, thank you to your staff for their time in reviewing our letters and visiting with our team, and we appreciate working with you as you continue down this process. Thank you.
My name is Matt. This is how, we both live on Reno Avenue, and we wanted to address specifically the redesignation area for Reno Avenue. Can I use this thing here?
So we are representing Dr. Minor, who owns some land at the corner of Reno and Aubrey. He owns the property to the north, which is outlined in green and orange, and the green border that touches Reno. And Matt and I live both on Reno Avenue. I'm an engineer and Matt is a broker. So we're asking the board to consider helping Dr. Minor not end up with his split-zone property. You can currently see that the Reno border bisects his property. His property, again, is in green, and we're asking for the board to move the line to incorporate about 19 or 20 acres north so that he will have a consistent zoning, just to avoid impacts with financing, development, things like that. Just to point out, the area that is in black is the original designation border that was brought to the Planning Commission back in January. And just in case there's some concerns about jumping over essentially the original Reno border, on the upper left there, you'll see it says additional lands added February 2024, and adjacent to that is an area that is in blue. So this is land that's owned by Rose Hayashi, and I believe they petitioned the Planning Commission, and they were granted to include that area, which wasn't in the original circulation border. And so we feel that Dr. Minor could maybe get a similar consideration to have his lands pulled in if the board make that adjustment today. Thank you.
Gentlemen, I'm going to ask you a quick question.
Sure.
Is this today the first time that our public works in planning is hearing about this, or have you met with them or had a discussion with the supervisor for that?
We have met with Chris Mata off and on, just talking about Dr. Minor's lands. At that time, when we had spoken to him, the additional lands north of the border were possibly being considered. Later on, he told us that those were added in. So Dr. Minor felt he was prudent to come to the board today. We also submitted a letter, I think maybe early last month.
Last week. It was before the cutoff.
It's part of the agenda. It's under additional information. I think it's the only letter that's on the agenda, if you want to read that.
You have a question? Okay, go ahead.
I have one thing to add to. Did you present what you did to us today to the Planning Commission?
We did not. Unfortunately, we missed that opportunity to address this, just kind of the staggering of not knowing that the county was considering jumping over the original border. So we're playing a little makeup here.
I'll say that that 80 acres was just added to it recently, very recently.
Yeah. And the county has been granting variances. Like I said, this VA 4221 was approved June of this summer for five acres.
And so a couple of quick questions. That blue area right there, I don't believe is identified in this general plan update, to my knowledge, unless, because when I'm looking at it right now, it's not in what's been presented to us. So that may have been approved by the Planning Commission after the fact, but I'm not seeing it as part of the action that we're taking today.
That was approved through a variance process. And it was not included in the original area.
All right. And then also too, a question I have for staff. If we were to add this additional piece, which is being requested in the general plan, is it minor enough that it wouldn't require additional studies, or is this something that would have to trigger some additional review?
It would be a minor amendment because of the unique nature of the straddling parcel. It wouldn't trigger any more environmental review. What this is simply doing, what your board is being requested to do would still require subsequent discretionary approval. So staff would not have a concern if your board was considering to add that.
Okay, so we could add it. All right, very good. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Board. Thank you for your time. Jennifer Cruz, she heard pronouns. Although I'm sure this morning's push for passing of the general plan is not an attempt to rush your development before March 5th primary elections to satisfy those developers who may or may not contribute to your campaigns. As a voice for the people, I want to let you know that in speaking to community members impacted by this, we echo all of the environmental issues that have been addressed in the speakers before I stood up here, and also want to express serious concern around the environmental repair and preservation, wetlands, wildlife territories. Constituents also have serious concerns about impacts on their air and water pollution, and concerns about sewer infrastructure, and many, many more things. I'm just here to say that to you all and hope that you'll take it under consideration. I have the privilege of being here on paid vacation. Many people do not, and these are some of the things that I've heard from constituents be impacted by these environmental issues. We ask that you not push forward this item while overlooking environmental considerations, and we hope that you will hear us. Thank you.
Good morning. I am Kent Kenny. I am, I believe, the closest resident with a farm on the opposite side of the river from the special study area, just downstream on Piedra Road. I'm also the president of the Kings River Land Trust. I believe that we should have, instead of designating a special study area, we should have, in this plan, had an update to the Kings River Regional Plan. 1970 was a long time ago. To manage such an important environmental resource, I realize there are many references to environmental conservation in this current plan that you are considering, and I think many of them are really valuable. But when it comes to the special study area, why are we not handling this as we would most other projects that are brought to the Planning Commission? And if there is conditional use permit necessary, handle that through the SEQA process with an environmental impact report. Remember that an environmental impact report states the positive of a project, as well as maybe environmental issues. But social benefits are a part of that environmental impact report, and those options, those alternatives that you get to consider then oftentimes allow you to propose mitigation that will make the project much better. Now, I realize that you've stated that for a project that is specific, most likely an environmental impact report would be done. But remember that the Kings River is a very special, sensitive area, probably the most environmentally sensitive area that you have in Fresno County. So we need to be cautious about that. So we need mitigation. That mitigation, if a project like this is going to be done, needs to have permanent protection for the Kings River habitat through setbacks from the river for habitat corridors, and it needs to protect agricultural resources. We have very important agricultural resources along the Kings River, and we are losing them at a very rapid rate, and I see that if a project like what is in the special study area is not managed carefully. So there needs to be no less than a one-to-one mitigation required. For 100 acres that is developed, there needs to be at least 100 acres conserved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chairman. My name is Radley Reap. I reside at 557 West Escalon in Clovis. Yesterday, I submitted two letters, and I believe you have them. The first letter was simply to let you know that I felt that the county's response to my previous letter to the county was inappropriate. I had written a responses regarding environmental justice, ag land conservation, and the problems with the project description, and I felt that what was provided in the draft EIR, the comments that came back with the final EIR, were insufficient. The second one was to list eight items that I felt that the county need to correct before moving forward, examples being that their county provided no redline copy of the changes being made to the policy document. If you check what you provided through this hearing, it's not there. No cost analysis of whether or not the new plan can be implemented at all. The disappearance of 300 mitigation measures from the 2000 plan to the 2024 plan without any explanation whatsoever. And also, I want to let you know that even though the public's requested it, this county has never provided a single written document explaining any of the myriad of changes going on, so we don't know why they're taking place. So to finish up here, I'd like to give you an analogy. It's not perfect, but I'll give you an idea. If the county were to build a 10-story building, you'd have to have a plan, you'd have to have safety measures put in place, and you have to do reporting as the building is being built, maybe floor by floor. All those things were required for the 2000 general plan. However, none of them were complied with, not one. You departed from the plan completely in the way you have implemented the plan. You didn't measure, check any of the safety measures to make sure they were being mitigated correctly. You didn't do reporting for 10 years. So basically, the plan just went on its own without anybody paying attention. Now we're at the stage where we want to take that 10-story building and add another 10 floors to it. And so there are some questions I think we have to stop and pause and ask ourselves. Has there been any damage, or are there any problems with not being able to implement the current general plan that you're building on? If you were not able to implement the current plan because you didn't have the money, what guarantee is you'll be able to implement the next one if the same situation occurs? These are serious questions that I think you need to answer and figure out before you move forward. I would like to let you know that, remind everybody here, this is not a new plan. I know it's called a new plan in the policy document, but it's not. And so it's still the old plan being fixed, supposedly. And so I'd like you to go back and take a look at all the stuff, all of the documents and comments that people have submitted for this particular project, clear back to 2006.
Radley, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to close. Oh.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Ben Yule, and this is my son, John. Our address is 735 West Alluvial, Fresno, 93711. Here to represent Harris Farms River Ranch, and I want to, I think the best way is to read into the record an email that I sent to the Kings River Conservancy that had inquired about the project, and we appreciate their reaching out. First of all, the proposed project, it is only proposed, and there is no project at this time. The study area is simply that, something we've been looking at. But if it does go forward, the area we're talking about is 700 acres, not 7,000 acres. So 7,000 is the number that got in there because that's the entire holdings of the Harris family in that area, but we're talking about 700, or actually a little less. The remainder of the entire holdings would be just as they are now: horse pastures, agriculture, and grazing land, and the personal residence of the Harris family. We do support and will assist in the preparation of an update to the Kings River Regional Plan. We think that's a good idea. As mentioned, previous speakers, it's quite old at this point, and we support updating that. If this project does move forward, it's all located northwesterly of Trevor Springs Road, not southeasterly. In other words, there's nothing on the riverside of this project, proposed project. There's been some mention about how this is going to have a waiver of restrictions. I'm not aware of any waiver of any restrictions. This would be a project, if it goes forward, it would be submitted, just like every other project. It'd have to be a specific plan, an EIR, all kinds of studies done, biological, cultural, traffic, and so forth. So the SEQA process applies to all that. There has been no project submitted this time. Also, it mentioned that none of the property in the 700 acres we're talking about is in the Williamson Act. As stated, we look forward to working with the Kings River Conservancy and any other entities or parties that would like to discuss this with us. We've had initial reach out to others, such as the Cal Fire and Sanger School District and so forth, and this will all be done.
Thank you, Mr. Yule. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So no further public comment. I'm going to close the public portion. Any other members have anything they'd like to add? I've got a few comments, but I want to give members an opportunity to say a few things before we move forward with motions.
For sure I do, and I mentioned that I might be inspired by some of the comments from the public, and I am. And so I want to follow up with a couple of things. And I'm going to speak to them in categories, and I'm going to go back to this last one about the Kings River, which is not in my district, but the San Joaquin River is in my district. And if I could wave a magic wand and go back in time, and I've got Dan O'Connell, who serves with me on the San Joaquin River Conservancy here today as well. And so I'm going to be supportive of that study area that's been discussed by many speakers today, being included in today's general plan as staff recommended against the wishes of the Planning Commission. However, I'm going to say, I would say this. If I could go back in time when we built along the San Joaquin River, and I realized that it was the city of Fresno, but the county was included, we did some things wrong that I'm going to make sure that don't happen on the Kings River, and that is building right up to the very boundary of the river and locking in a major section of the river away from the community. So this is something that has plagued the San Joaquin River Conservancy. We've had massive debate ever since these things happened, and so it creates access problems for the public to enjoy the San Joaquin River. I'm not going to support, when the plan gets rolled out about the specifics, which Mr. Yule just talked about, I'm going to be paying attention at that moment, at that level, about protecting the boundaries of the river. So to give you an example, Fresno built right up to the bluff of the river and allowed very few areas that could be designated for the public to gain real access to the river. And so it's been a problem ever since, and we are encouraging our friends in Madera not to make that mistake. And when it comes to the Kings River, I'll be certainly aware of that as well, because now in Madera County, they're also building close to the river, but they have a buffer zone which can allow for trails and people to access the river and enjoy the river who don't live on the river. So to all of those questions about protecting, and a couple of speakers spoke about it, the river habitat, after serving on the San Joaquin River Conservancy for 11 years, that is very valuable to me, too. So I know we're not discussing those details now for that study area, but I can already see the concerns are mostly about that. And so I'm going to be very supportive of overview of that as that goes forward. Then there are another number of questions about leapfrog development in general, from Mr. O'Connell spoke about it, Kay from the League of Cities spoke about it, urban sprawl. And so I've had interesting conversations about this lately because And so I've had interesting conversations about this lately because of being in forums and stuff, and people are concerned about urban sprawl. And you have to address the mistakes that were made in the past and make sure you don't repeat those mistakes. But I would say that there are people in our community that want a lot of different lifestyles and places to live. And some people don't want to live in the city of Fresno. They don't want to even live in a small town like I grew up in Selma. They want to live in Cantua Creek, or they want to live in the foothills. And the county is going to be, you know, tasked with how to, how to move forward with that in an appropriate manner so that we can address the development concerns, the infrastructure concerns, who's going to pay for that infrastructure? Certainly, we don't have the money to pay for that infrastructure to let people just go up and build wherever they want. But that would be, you know, that would be as that development occurs. And there are already problems in that arena. At the same time, the truth is, and I have a Madera County Supervisor who I speak with all the time, and he publicly said, "Madera's building a new city right on the other side of the river." So things happen, and we have to make adjustments. And, you know, we are one of the fastest-growing counties in the state of California. Surprisingly enough, people are realizing the good thing that we have here locally. And so they are moving into our county, and we've got to be prepared to present them places to live. And that's always difficult. And some people say, "Well, we want them to live in sky rises in the city of Fresno." But that's not where everybody wants to live. So we just need to make the appropriate measures as we move forward and allow for people to move into our county. And I think if we just say, "We're going to put the brakes on all development, and we're going to force all the development into the city of Fresno," I think we're going to end up with a different problem than we've got today. So I just think it means, to me, the general plan doesn't even actually address all that. The general plan, to me, is a skeleton which, in the days to come, and years to come, and decades to come, we face the individual developments individually and make sure they comply with the general plan, but we make all the requirements on the development at that time. So that's my viewpoint, and I think we need to be flexible enough to allow for that. Many speakers have talked about, "Well, this plan takes us out to 2042." And that, and that is always a problem because life changes. And I'm sure changes will be made between now and 42, and 42. So I think we just have to be flexible to be able to, as projects come on board, at that moment, that's when we need the voices of the public in here to protect the river, make sure it's not unmitigated urban sprawl. Those are the times when we need to hear from you, and I'll be certainly participating with that. I did want to ask, Jennifer Clark from the city of Fresno talked about some of these policies not being legally enforceable. And I wanted to ask, because, you know, they're an agency partner of ours right down the street, I wanted to ask Bernard, or maybe the attorneys, you know, about those comments. Is this plan legally defensible?
I'll defer to county, county counsel on that.
We will, you might want to talk just in general before we turn, maybe, we have Sarah Orwitz on the, on the phone, who's our outside counsel on this, but you might want to talk a little bit about the policies you have or the provisions you have that address those concerns in general, and then Sarah can, I think, can help us on the other part of it.
Well, certainly, based on a lot of comments, we've addressed topically everything that was spoken to today. A lot of what you see before you are implementation of state law, where we have very little discretion. And so from, from a categorical standpoint, the items that are addressed in this general plan, we believe comply with the state law. We believe that they're, that they're adequate, and they meet the state, state's mandates.
Have we heard from the state, Bernard, on this general plan?
Well, there are different state agencies that we, we have coordinated with, and so yes, we have heard from the state. As I mentioned in my opening comments, we've also coordinated the development of our environmental justice policies and programs with the State Attorney General's Office. And so they have, they have, we have worked hand in hand. They have, we have provided policies, they gave us comments, we refine those policies. And I can't speak on behalf of them, but they have not raised concerns with what's presented before your board today.
So you've been, you know, a lot of people are really concerned about how a general plan is developed, people saying, "You're not doing it like you did it the last time." It's different. You took out safeguards. They're very worried and concerned. But we are, most of, most of our requirements come from the state in the framework of general plans across the state of California. And you've been working with the state, including the Attorney General's Office. They submit comments, just like other folks submit comments, and you've worked with them hand in hand, you said, to address these comments.
I mean, my, my position is that this general plan has more safeguards than the current general plan contains. There are obviously things that have occurred over the last 20 years that have refocused on topics that were not addressed in 2000. And our general plan, I think, does a good job of addressing those, those things topically. We have, you know, there was reference to removal of mitigation measures, you know, there may have been deletions because things have been done or no longer germane, but those have been replaced twofold. So I think our general plan does a good job, and our environmental document as well looks at the impacts associated with implementing the general plan.
All right. So more safeguards, that's very quotable, so I appreciate that. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Buddy.
You know, I haven't, there's one thing I didn't hear today, and that actually has the most overriding deal on growth and development, and that's the Groundwater Stabilization Act. And there, anybody talk about that. And that in itself will cut back leapfrogging. You know, he mentioned Madera County doing a planned city north of us. That could end up going nowhere before it's over with, just because they're not going to be able to comply to that act. And now, years ago, in 2000, there was no such thing, so the county had complete jurisdiction over that. And now we have groundwater stabilization, you know, agencies that are actually more in charge of that than we are. We're only a kind of a partner with them. But the problem is, I think in this room, there's only about three or four people that even understand, one of them's sitting over there on the other side of the dais, how the Groundwater Stabilization Act may end up working, because it's still a work in progress. So I think that's, that's why the plan has to be, can't be a completely defined deal because we really don't know how the act is going to work with this.
You are correct. You are correct. And the trend has been that the state has gotten more restrictive than least restrictive. And so in this document are references to all of the various GSAs, and we participate in that process. But you're absolutely right. If a project cannot demonstrate availability, sustainable availability of water, then for all intents and purposes, the project can't move forward. And so, so those are things, I agree. I mean, it's, it's a comprehensive document. We'd be here for hours covering each of the elements and all the policies and programs, but I will tell you that those are the policies and programs, the safeguards, that as we, that guide staff in its evaluation of future projects.
Yeah, correct. And I include you in the group that understands the act, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Quintero.
Mr. Menas, I forgot to ask you one question. And the question was with, with this plan, did you receive any comments, questions, or concerns from school districts?
Trying to recall, I think we did have, we did coordinate with Sanger Unified School District. They may have provided a comment, but I think that was the only school district that we had actual received written comments.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure they were covered or...
Yeah, no, we definitely, they were included in the distribution, so yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have three items. One, the Reno Avenue issue, that's in your district, so I'll leave that for you. But I believe that the two speakers that came forward have a reasonable request and would be interested in trying to accommodate their needs. But again, I'll leave that to you and your district. I would like to have Sue Beckley, if you would come forward again, please. I have one question for you. Didn't want to interrupt you during your presentation. You mentioned in your comments about the Kings River Regional Plan.
Correct.
I believe it's been noted that that is an older document that needs to be updated. Under whose jurisdiction is that, that that could occur? Whose responsibility is that to update that plan?
I defer that to Chris Mata and staff.
We, we can speak to that. Certainly, it is a county-adopted regional plan. So the county would be responsible for, for updating that plan. And I will just note that while the plan is dated based on age, the policies that exist have, have worked to preserve the area. Essentially, there is no development opportunities along the river. The majority of that river is designated as open space and does not allow, I mean, we do have agricultural zoning, but it is one of the most restrictive areas to, to potentially develop. Home sites obviously are allowed, some farming practices. So I think it served, the, really, the only intensive-type development that is ever contemplated is the potential of extraction of aggregate, aggregate resources. And we've seen a couple of those projects along the way.
And the impact that the river has had in, in its flood stage, for instance, overtaking several ponding basins that were related to gravel extraction, so concerns such as that.
While, while last year was a very difficult year for all of us that live in the state of California, it did shed some light on what could happen once every 100 years, so now maybe we're better prepared to handle that. Now that I understand it's the county's responsibility, the general plan has been a major undertaking. We are obviously years delayed in doing this. Once we move this plan forward, perhaps the next thing we could look at would be the Kings River Regional Plan that was requested. Seems logical, especially now since in the general plan, we have a study area that will be along there. It seems logical that maybe that will be the next appropriate plan that we need to update. So I appreciate your clarification on that.
Thank you, and I reiterate the opportunities for mitigation, the opportunities for setting things back that would protect the river and its environment. Thank you all.
Thank you. Go ahead, Supervisor.
Just that, most of that area is in my district, and just working with constituents over the year, that is the most restricted land use in, in that, in that district as it sits today.
Which I think is a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. And then I have just one more, more question, not for you, Ms. Berkeley, but for, for Kay, Kay Birkin.
Yeah, Sue Buckley.
Sorry, Sue. I need Kay. Is Kay still here? Thank you.
You're welcome.
You made a comment in your remarks that you feel this, this promotes urban sprawl. So if you're referring to the study area, I could probably see that. But in terms of the rest of the plan, how do you justify your comment?
Well, I'm very concerned about the lack of regional plan provisions in the plan. There was a withdrawal of a Friant regional plan. The Kings River Plan is quite old. There was a, it seems to me, a withdrawal in this plan of a commitment to continue encouraging development, infill development in city areas as opposed to in the county at large.
Which is ironic that we just approved one today for an infill project earlier in our meeting, thanks to Supervisor Brandal.
I was pleased to hear about that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I was curious about that. Mr. Chairman, I'll conclude my remarks. I, again, want to compliment staff for bringing this forward today. It's been years in the making. I find it a bit ironic that we are criticized for taking so long, and yet, when it's finally delivered, now we're getting criticism for its lacking issues, and then it needs to be delayed. So staff, I appreciate everything you've done. It's been a tremendous undertaking. And I, for one, being in this chair for the last few years, recognize that sometimes, no matter what you do, some people are never going to be completely satisfied. But in a county this large, you're never going to make everyone happy. So I'm sure in your positions, as long as you've been there, you can relate to that as much, as much as I can. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm waiting to hear your remarks on the Reno issue and how we can address that today, because I do believe today is an appropriate time to do that, that maybe we can alleviate the concerns of at least a couple of our residents today.
Excellent. And I appreciate all your comments very much. I was able to take off some of the things I wanted to bring up, so I appreciate everyone being so astute. One thing I do want to ask county counsel again, we heard additional testimony, there were some additional documents that were turned in, some of which I believe were duplicates of documents that we've received in the past. But I want to ask the question, is there anything that we've received today whereby you believe that we need to, to delay our action on this?
Well, on that, I'd like to, there was the question that was asked that I don't think quite got answered yet on the ag mitigation, now to our outside counsel, Ms. Soitz, who is with us in spirit and on teams. I think particularly, Sarah, we have the question about the agricultural mitigation that was raised by the city, but you also, you know, we, we did get quite a bit of material, I won't use the phrase dumped, but delivered to us yesterday on the, on the holiday right before this. Make sure that there's nothing that would advise the board that we should take another meeting to address those.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Supervisors. I hope everyone can hear me, so I'll take a moment to confirm that.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thanks. I have reviewed the letter from Carson's Black and Tier, and the follow-up, follow-up, follow-up letter from the city of Fresno that we received at Billy last night. I did not see anything in these letters that suggested the agricultural mitigation measures as proposed already to be revised, consistent with the model ordinance that's been issued by the Department of Conservation. I didn't see anything that suggested that the general plan and general plan EIR require further revision. And I'm certainly happy to talk about either of these letters or any points they might have made in, in further detail, as you would like.
Very good. Well, I just, generally, just wanted to hear, and so what I'm hearing you say is you have not seen or heard anything today that would need to, that would require us to have an additional meeting. You still feel comfortable that we are in a very defensible position with the work that we've done?
I think generally speaking, this document is extensive, and the mitigation measures are detailed, and they disclose the impacts that are unavoidable of a project of this size, a programmatic project of this size, yes.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Next thing, I want to talk about the Reno Road. Since staff indicated that this would not cause any delay if we included this area where a property is, is split, I, I would like that. So if the motion maker could include that additional area, so one property owner would have their whole parcel included in, I believe it is LUE 24, the proposed Reno Road Willow Bluff five-acre rural residential designation, include that, again, that piece that was mentioned?
That will, Mr. Chairman, need to go back to the Planning Commission, that part of it. It doesn't affect the general plan approval.
So, okay. If that does need to go back to the Planning Commission, we would need to have some type of an application, so I would imagine. So I need more further clarification on that, because what I heard from Bernard was that we could make that minor modification here, and there wouldn't be a problem, but I'm hearing the county council saying that it's going to require...
If council believes it needs to go back, then my suggestion would be is to just direct staff, as a follow-up subsequent action, bring that back to the commission, ultimately your board, and not delay taking action today.
Okay. Then, since council has stated that, then we're going to have to do it that way. And then finally, on timing, what's interesting to me, I took office in January of 2017... What's interesting to me, I took office in January of 2017, and I believe it was shared with us within the first few meetings that we were going to update the general plan and hopefully have that before us within 12 months. And, you know, here we are almost seven years later. Some things that have happened, I know state law has changed, and so what is included in the general plan, that has changed over time, too. So I appreciate staff and also the consultants that we've hired, the work that they've done to try to make sure that we've included everything that state law requires when we take a look at updating this document. So this is long overdue. Staff's been working on it, I think, since 2010 or 2011 is when you started looking at it. But who's counting, right? So with that, I'll entertain a motion from this body, and we can give direction then to staff on the Reno item, but just not included at this time with the general plan.
Mr. Chairman, so I want to make clear on that Reno item. It cannot be included today, or it can be included with direction to go back to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, so County Council, what I heard from you is that it can't be included today, but we can give direction to staff to have that item heard at the back of the Planning Commission.
Correct. That's a change in the boundaries there that has to go before the Planning Commission first.
But you can give direction for it to be heard back at the Planning Commission. So is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, as discussed, as presented by the staff today to approve the general plan and give direction for staff to go back to the Planning Commission on this Reno property, as discussed. What's that?
What about the study area?
And this, well, when I said, as recommended by our staff, that includes that study area, not the Planning Commission's version.
Is that true, Council?
Right. If the Board approves Actions 1, 3, and 4, and refers to back to staff to bring forward that change, I believe you'll have affected what you want, including the study area referred to.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion on this? And staff, anything you're confused on, any clarification you need before we call the question?
No. And just to inform your board and the public, if this action moves forward, the general plan will become effective. And however, the zoning ordinance update and the rezonings will go into effect 30 days after.
All right, thank you for that clarification. We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Looks like it carries unanimously. Thank you, staff.
We now move to item number seven. Board of Supervisors Committee reports and comments.
Board members, do you have anything that you would like to share? We'll start to the left and move to the right. Steve, nothing?
None.
Okay. Go ahead, Sal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to note in our consent items that had a gentleman that passed away recently, good friend. His name was Bill Biggers. He was 102 years old, and he was the oldest retired police officer in the state of California. And Bill continued, after he retired, to do investigative work. And most recently, served as a docent at the Legion of Valor Museum. And I just know that we're going to miss him a lot, his smile and all the activities that he participated in. Continued driving his car until he was 100 years old. Thank you.
That's impressive. All right, and I just have a couple of comments. I was able to be in Washington, DC last week for the National Association of Counties. I'm Vice Chair of Finance, Pensions, and Intergovernmental Affairs. We had two different resolutions that we dealt with and had an opportunity to meet with offices of both of our United States Senators, as well as several of our congressional offices, and then got to meet Congressman Costa in person. So appreciated having that opportunity. Paul Nerland was there as well, and we had some incredible discussions around the Inflation Reduction Act and things that we can be doing here in Fresno County around energy, where we could get significant refunds back from the IRS, which, right now, the Department of Finance is writing rules on all of this. So stay tuned. Again, I think there could be some great opportunities for the county of Fresno to be involved in projects that, around energy, around hydrogen, that could benefit all corners of Fresno County, so.
I got one question to ask.
Yes, buddy.
Are they going to just run the hell out of the monopoly money printing machine or what?
So, yes, the national debt is enormous. I have no idea what Congress is going to do. It seems that they have very difficult challenges. It's difficult for Congress just to come up with rules on how they're going to conduct business, which is kind of strange. But with the Inflation Reduction Act, I forget how many tens of billions of dollars were set aside specifically for energy projects. And so with that, that was something passed about two years ago by the, you know, by the Biden administration. So when the printing press stops, I don't know when it's going to stop, but the national deficit's huge. So with that, I think that's it for comments.
We now move to item number eight, Board Appointments.
Any Board Appointments? Supervisor Brandal?
None.
Supervisor Mendez?
Reappointment to the Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board. Alicia Morgan to the private sector position. New term to start on 11/2 to go to 11/1, 2025.
Perfect.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reappoint Tiffany Binion Magnum to the At-Large Board, Member A position on the Fresno Arts Council for a term expiring June 30, 2026.
All right. Mr. Kinter, you have anyone?
No.
All right, and I have none. So with that, anyone in the public wishing to comment on these appointments which were just mentioned? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion, entertain a motion.
I'll make them.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of those appointments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that carries unanimously.
We now move to item number nine, Public Presentation. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the Board on any matter not on this agenda.
Is there anyone here wishing to comment on items that are not on the agenda?
Just note that the IHSS matter is on closed session, so we'll do general public comment first. You'll have an opportunity on the IHSS matter at the closed session comment, so we'll do general comment first.
Yeah, so right after, right after these comments, we will go to, yeah, yes, because in closed session, we're going to be talking about IHSS.
We do have that on the agenda today.
Anyone wishing to, again, comment on things that are not on the agenda, now is the time for that. Yep, we got you.
Thank you, Board of Directors. I do appreciate the time for public comments. As I indicated before, my name is Jan Bordes. I'd like to discuss with you the issues that I've run into regarding the Civil Service Commission of Fresno County. Civil Service Commission was created by Fresno County Charter to provide oversight for county employees and to ensure compliance with the laws regarding public employees and the county's obligations under the merit civil service, or merit system of public service. Last year, I filed a 26-page grievance, provided 100 pages of irrefutable evidence that the county is in direct violation of statutory requirements and obligations under the Fresno County's personnel rules. Specifically, the county is violating Rule 4 almost in its entirety, line for line. The complaint was completely ignored. Soon after, I discovered the Civil Service Commission is made up of several members that are improperly seated, and their term limits ended last year. This information is on Fresno County's own website, and this was brought to your attention and their attention and ignored. I was then improperly labeled a vexatious litigant by the Civil Service Commission, which can only be done by a court of law. Is this how Fresno County addresses legitimate grievances, censorship? This is exactly why Fresno County has 1,400 vacancies and triple-digit turnover. I ask you now, why is this not being addressed? Your silence speaks volumes. You can feign ignorance, but the reality is, in October, I spoke about this during this public comments and gave you this exact information. I ask for explanation as to why this is acceptable, and I'm requesting a motion right now, today, to address this issue on the record, so it does not continue kicking the can down the road and allowing the law to be ignored. This needs to be addressed. There are no extraordinary or unusual circumstances. This needs to be addressed today. Again, your silence is deafening, much more than any of your words possibly could. You have 30 seconds. I ask again, is this how you do business in Fresno County? You've now been advised that they are past their term limits, that they are improperly providing oversight, and yet you stand there in silence. I'll be back up here later.
Before we hear from the next speaker, I want to remind the audience that if things are not agendized, you can say what you like, but it would be a violation of the Brown Act if we were to make a motion on something. So I appreciate the passion some members have, and actually, I would like to maybe have an item addressed, because, again, anyone can say anything, anything they like. If someone wants to come forward and, you know, talk about things, again, that are not on the agenda, they're welcome to do that. But this body is not allowed by law to take action on an item that is not agendized, and this is something which is not agendized. But County Council, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, that was what I was going to mention, is that there's no item on the agenda for that. So you took the words out of my mouth.
All right. So with that, again, this is items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on items that are not on the agenda before we move to items that are on the agenda?
And I have a question about that for the IHSS. Are they not, are we not supposed to speak on that right now?
Correct. So we're going to get to IHSS like right after we're done with items that are not on the agenda. So is there anyone else wishing to comment on an item that is not on the agenda?
Not on the agenda.
Yes, please.
Okay. This is about, my name is Mary, good morning, good afternoon. My name is Mary Helen Lopez, and I just come up here, and I wanted to show you my paycheck that has zero on it. 50% is the federal government, 34% is the state, 17 is you. Zero on my paycheck goes a share of cost. Need to look into that. Somebody needs to live on $600, and I have to pay for it? Thank you very much.
All right. Seeing no further public comment on items that are not on the agenda, Madam Clerk, if you can read into the next item.
Mr. Chairman, hold on, Bernice. Mr. Chairman, my office was advised this morning that somebody wanted to come talk about an issue about a dog, and that person has not risen to speak. But if you are that person, you wanted to talk about a dog, right now is your chance to speak. And I don't know who it is in the crowd, but I wanted to make sure that they knew that this was the chance that they had to speak. So maybe they didn't show up after all. They told us this morning that we're going to be here.
Okay.
All right.
We now move to public comment for closed session items.
Good morning, Board. My name is Brenda, and I live in Supervisor Brian Pacheco's district. I am an IHSS provider. I have been providing services for about nine years. I'm here to address some of the inequities in this boardroom and in this nation. We all recognize that this board, who makes these decisions, is not a representation of our community here. I am well aware of all the county contracts, and we are the only contract that the county is looking to cut health care from. Is our work providing care and compassion to people with disabilities not important? Is access to good health care not something we deserve? Then why must we, an industry made up of mainly women and women of color, the only contract that health care should be cut from, and no raises given? These are the inequities that I want you to answer for as a board who says they care about senior care, who says they care about racial equality, who says they want to make their community better, but we can't agree on a contract? Is this your answer to making our community better by not allowing workers to have quality health care? I would say this is unacceptable. And they wanted me to tell you guys Happy Black History Month.
Good morning again, Board. Jennifer Cruz, she/her pronouns, in purple today in solidarity with SEIU 2015. Also, again, here, having the privilege of paid vacation time. No need to call my CEO, Mr. Chairman. This board lacks, this board's lack of willingness to listen and its inability or lack of priority to this issue affecting SEIU 2015 members is unacceptable and an outrage. My own grandmother benefited from IHSS services the last 10 years of her life, and many other family members from my large Latina family benefited. Skilled nursing facilities services can cost up to $100,000 per year, and 40 to 50 of them in Fresno County hold between 50 and 100 people per facility. These facilities and their staff have mentioned to me that they would not have the capacity if the people of IHSS were not here to serve. These workers save us hundreds of millions of dollars and deserve a contract that ensures they have health benefits and a wage that ensures they do not have to work three jobs or worry about food insecurity as they do with their current hourly rate. This union can't even strike because they are caring for family who need them, and this board's lack of prioritization of this issue is cruel and unacceptable. Do right by the people you are elected to serve. Be leaders who do not need a challenger in your district before you'll take the right action. The people of Fresno County are awake, and each of you is replaceable with the power of the people engaged.
I do have a rule, so in here, you're welcome to say whatever you like. And again, you're not going to be able to, we won't be able to comment back on things that, a lot of this stuff that we're going to be dealing with in closed session. But please be respectful of all speakers, and please do not clap in here. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Mark Blodgett. I've been a health care provider for 24 years. I'm 63 years old. I am a Kaiser member. I've been there for, since 2005. I wish you guys wouldn't take our health care insurance away, because I did my research because I make too much money to qualify for Medi-Cal or Calviva. For me to get health insurance on my own, it would be about around $1,300 a month. That's over half of my income. I would not make ends meet to pay my bills at home. And then, of course, Calviva insurance would run me about around $1,000 a month because of my age, because I'm 63 years old. And I am a diabetic. I have, I take a lot of medication, and Kaiser has saved my life a few times. And I think some of my coworkers will be, are probably in the same vote as me. Please do not take our health care insurance away, because what you guys are offering us on the table right now doesn't, doesn't cut it for me and probably for my other health care providers.
Good morning. My name is Irene Green. I come from Old Fresno. I've been around here forever. Everybody tell me, when they, girl, when you pass away, they're going to have to get to Save Mart Center. But I come from a background of workers, people that was involved in the community. Ms. Zelda Hunt, Ms. Suti Douglas, my godmother, the Masons, my mama's them, it's the Masons, Margie Mason Center. We've been around here for years and years. But one thing I do can say, if y'all feel like we done did something to y'all, I'm going to apologize for everybody. We not bullying, we not trying to do none of that. The only reason I'm really speaking, it's Black History Month. And I went back in my pictures of my mom and them marching with Martin Luther King and Caesar Chavez and all them, and what was they marching for? They was marching for me and my kids. So for us to do something or say something to one of y'all that's inappropriate, I'm going to apologize for everybody. That ain't the way we mean it. We don't mean to be bullies. We just trying to get a understanding on what is really going on. This what I'm going to say. Give us that $20 an hour, give us our insurance, and put it in the Lord. Give us that $20 an hour, give us our insurance, and put it in the Lord's hand. He a on-time God. He going to come. Something going to come up, I promise you. Gavin Newsom going to come up with something, or whoever else take his place. But in the meanwhile, everybody that I know, especially us women's, we, y'all don't see us with no nails on, y'all don't see our hair did, we don't go to the beauty shop and get pedicures and stuff, we don't have enough money to even treat ourselves. And usually, when you taking care of somebody sick, the person that's taking care of them die before the person that's sick, because they get sick. So we need our medical, we need our little $20 an hour, and then if it don't work, then let's come back to the table. I ain't heard nobody say, what's Plan B, C, and D? Everybody got a Plan A. What's Plan B, C, and D? You know, I wish I would have listened to my godmother and all them when they was living, and my neighbors. I grew up with Joe Wingfield kids, Williams, Arthridge, all them. I grew up with them, but I wasn't paying attention. I wasn't paying attention, and now they didn't pass it on. I wish I would have paid attention, because I didn't. Thank y'all.
Good morning. My name is Sue Hammond. I've been here a few times. I've been an IHSS caregiver here in Fresno for two years, but I have been caregiving for 16 years total. Right now, I just want to give you the numbers of our people that are not making enough money to be able to work just one job. They're working multiple jobs in order to make ends meet. That's 80% of our caregivers in Fresno County. 55% of IHSS providers in Fresno County are unable to get their medications. I am on medications. It is so important. We need our medications. Please do not take away our health care. Luckily enough, I'm of age where I get Medicare and I have Kaiser, but these young people do not have that. That would be horrible to do that to them. Do not think about us not making money. We, $20 an hour is not a lot to ask for in this day and age. If you go to the store, eggs now are $3 and some odd cents. That's probably one of the cheaper things that you can make that's healthy for you, you know? I mean, come on, guys, listen to me. Please do what is right for our IHSS people. We also worked through that pandemic. We were exposed to COVID, you know? It's just normal to ask for something that is going to help and benefit all of us. 54% of IHSS providers are having difficulty paying their mortgages each month. I'm just asking, please, listen to us, do the right thing. I appreciate everybody on the board. I appreciate what your jobs are. I know you guys have a lot to think about, but do think about us. We are worthy of being able to take care of people and keep our health. If, if we didn't have that health care, can you imagine? People would be, go bankrupt. They would not be able to pay their bills. They would be in medical disarray. So, and the $20 an hour would help us to be able to afford the things that other people are able to afford and not have to work three or four jobs. That's all I ask. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is John Grove, and you've heard me speak before. In fact, I actually spoke to one of you in Medina one time. And I just want to say that, okay, the highest minimum wa, the highest wages for IHSS is San Francisco at $20.75 an hour. There's no reason why we can't get that, and I can't help but to think that if you were in San Francisco, they would have never saw $20 an hour. I can't help but to think that. And, okay, because, and you have all these funds, that you help all these other agencies, all these other organizations and everything, you fund them, you support them, and you're there for them, but you're not doing it for us. To me, that, that's being discriminated, to me, okay? And, and I remember Chairman Maggie said, you said on the news one time that we crossed the line. I remember hearing you say that, and I don't believe that that, it's us crossing the line. I believe that discriminating, abusing, and not being truthful is crossing the line. And you want us to, you want to push us away, you don't want us to be around. I mean, you're, I'm sure your response would move to San Francisco, go work in McDonald's. That would be turning our backs on the needy, on the crippled, on the, the people that can't do things for themselves. Some of them are children, okay? That would be abusing children, and it seems like that you guys are in favor of that, you know? I mean, like everybody else is saying, you know, come on, get right, you know, do what should be done. Help us out like you do everybody else. Stop the discriminating, stop the abusing, and stop the non-truths. Okay? Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Ronnie Lewis. I've been an IHSS worker for over 35 years already. I done cared for family, friends, and relatives. Everything about me is real. I don't fake on nothing that I do or nothing that I say, but you gentlemen need to understand who we are. You don't know who you are because you don't walk in our shoes. How you going to know who I am if you don't walk a day in my shoes? You walk a day in my shoes, and you'll know what I do every day. I clean bottoms, I clean fronts, I do, I do it all. My daughter's a paraplegic. I got to pick her up, carry her around. Every day, I do the exact same thing every day with my daughter. She 39 years old, and she can't do nothing for herself. So what are you saying? You going to take away my medical? You don't want to give me no raise? McDonald's make more money than we do. But you think back 30 years ago, how much money I was making, and how much money I'm making now? I ain't making nothing. I'm living on a poverty level. Every time I pay my rent, I got to save a check until the next check come. When I get finished paying my rent, I ain't got nothing coming. I barely can eat sometimes, but I bet you eat good. Silence is golden, but we not being silent no more. IHSS, 2015, SEIU, every time you turn around, you going to see these purple shirts behind me. And if you don't know what it stand for, look at the back of my coat. This is what it stand for right here. This is it. This is what we do. You do what you do, we do what we do. Why can't you just up the ante? Man, racial, racialists don't have nothing to do with it. Racialists don't have nothing to do with it at all. It's the gentlemen that's sitting up here on this theme right now that has something to do with it. No, 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 we not going to go racial. We not going to go racial, because I got a, I got a, I got a Rainbow Coalition family, and I take care of all of them. My rent, my money, go to my family. God, family, and Dallas Cowboys, that, that don't, nothing else matter.
Olga, I'm going to close the public hearing. If you have something to say, please say now.
Yes, my name is Olga Ray, and today I'm here. I'm not going to bore you with all the same stuff that we always have, but today I am stepping up to say, you know, it's been the, I went to the candidate forums and, you know, Sal Quintero asked that if we got him, two other people to vote for him to sign our contracts, he would, and I, I thought it was not a good thing to say, because he should be doing that on his own, but I'm not only saying that, but Mr. Pacheco, I know you're not up for election, but you were very supportive last year, last time, and I hope that we see you step up quickly, because I, I know you're not running this time, but I'm getting ready to put in my name for next time. We need you all to step up, Mr. Nasek and Buddy and all of you. We save the county so much money, because if they were not with us, they would be in a public, in a private facility, which costs way more, and you know the numbers better than I do, and so what, what is it going to take for you to step up now? It's getting late in the, in the time. We haven't had a contract since December, and it's time. It's time, and we need your attorneys to stop messing around with us, to be, be more polite, at least civil, you know? When they come into negotiating, they're very, very, not only sarcastic, but very bad-minded, mannered. So I ask you to rein in your, your attorneys on the manners, at least, but also to step up and do what's right for the county, for our workers. You talk about doing stuff for homeless, well, we're, we're a thread away from that. So we do not want to go there, because we don't want to take from your other budget. We need your budget to go to what it is. We are very hardworking. It's not like we sit down all day. We work very, very hard, and you know it, because many of you walked a day in our shoes. Show it, show it. Don't show us with words, and sometimes you don't, but show us with your, your actions. Step up. We want to see that. Thank you.
These are going to be the last two speakers that are in line right now, so. Oh, perfect, and you as well. I did not see you there. Last three speakers.
All right, thank you. Hi, my name's Melissa Hernandez. I'm an IHSS care provider, and I just wanted to advocate on behalf of the clients that I have and that we all have. We give our heart and soul to these clients, and it's, it's really hard work. We really love them and go above and beyond, and to, to only be able to make a little over minimum wage is a slap in the face, and a lot of us have families that we need to provide for, and I would hate to see people have to leave this job to go work for fast food that's going to be getting $20 an hour, just to be able to feed their own families, and that leaves, like, several people, like my aunt right over here, without a caregiver, and they really are in need, and I know you guys have a heart, and we're all going to be there someday when we get older and we're going to need someone. We want quality care, and it's hard to find quality care when people are paid so little, and we want, we want these people, all these IHSS care providers, they have a heart, they're fighting, and we want to be able to pay them well, so that way they can give that quality care. You don't want for, you wouldn't want for any of your family members to have mediocre care. You wouldn't want any of your family members or friends that have to deal with, you know, someone who doesn't even want to show up to work, because they're not getting paid. So please, on behalf of those that can't speak out for themselves, those that are disabled, please do right by them. Thank you.
Daniel O'Connell, I'm Policy Research Director at Central Valley Partnership. My organization's unique. We are a blue-green coalition, so we're very close with labor unions. A few years ago, we were here. I was here with the union as well, on the same issue. Over those years, I've pondered why this board so poorly represents your constituents. In those intervening years, we had a redistricting come up. My organization was deeply involved in analyzing what was happening in Fresno County and the region with redistricting, and there was a sister here that was commenting on racism. I could only really attribute the redistricting process to a form of systematic racism. The demographics of Fresno County has changed dramatically in the last 20, 30 years, and yet the lines for the redistricting did not move. And now we sit here, these folks of color, many of them women, petitioning you so that they can earn enough money to survive and pay rent while caring for people. It seems like the most obvious decision ever, when literally people at fast food chains are making more money than these folks. It's easy for us to project on you all caricatures, or, they are appealing to your humanity. I hope that you listen to them in closed session. I will say that the time that I've served on the San Joaquin River Conservancy Board with Supervisor Brandau has been wonderful. I have, I have seen his heart. I know you all care. You're really misaligned on this issue if you don't listen to these folks. This is something that screams for attention. They cannot go on strike. They cannot go on strike. What recourse do they have, then? Last time this issue came up, there was hunger strikes on the lawn out there. There was civil disobedience occurring outside. I ponder how to get you to listen. How will you hear them? It's immoral with the wages, with inflation and everything, so please, find it in your budget. The budgets should orient to the most vulnerable folks in the society. They should be number one. So please, listen to them.
And Bernice is going to assist you. We have a, we've got a microphone up here, so we can hear you. Oh, if you're able to.
My name is Catherine Alvarez, and I worked with IHSS for 14 years. I'm now going to be 69, and I'm, I'm being cared for, and I just came to support my workers, and I know what these ladies do and the hard work that they do. You know, 20 bucks for what? If you give them that, it's still not enough, but, you know, just look upon, I mean, it costs me, like, my health, I did have, I tell you what did help, that Kaiser helped to keep me up and able to care for my family members, all the way from my, my uncle, my grandmother, my mother, and, and it was, it takes a toll, and so we need that, they need that Kaiser, and they need that extra five bucks, you know? Because I can see what they do, and some hours is four hours here and another four hours here in order to make that money to pay the rent. So this is what I'm saying. I'm supporting them, and I just, I pray that you will take that into really deep consideration, and, you know, and that's what I have to say today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for your comments. We're going to close the public portion on items that are in closed session. We have heard you, and I appreciate you being here, taking time out of your day to continue to share how this program is impacting your life, so thank you for that. Madam Clerk.
So I turn it over to County Counselor. Is there anything that you'll need to report out, so the board can either recess now or come back?
Mr. Chairman, I do not anticipate any announcements out of closed session, so if the board chooses, they can adjourn following closed session.
All right, with that being the case, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment following closed session. We have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that's unanimous, and then we will adjourn after closed session. Thank you.